Wykes Obama, miembro de la Leña de las Mujeres de Voto de Rochester. Me gustaría bienvenida a todos ustedes aquí esta noche, los candidatos, la audiencia que está viendo y la Leña de las Mujeres de Voto y la biblioteca. También nos gustaría agradecer a nuestros generosos socios esta noche, la publicidad de Rochester, la Comisión de Comercio de la Comunidad de Rochester y la Biblioteca Pública de Rochester por su ayuda. Debido a la actual pandemia, estamos limitando a los participantes a los candidatos y los voluntarios necesarios, lo que es por lo que no vemos la publicidad de la Comisión de Comercio, aunque han enviado sus preguntas. Las guías para la distancia social y el uso de máscaras también están siendo seguidas. Me recuerda que puedo deshacerme ahora mismo. La Leña de las Mujeres de Voto es una organización de voluntariado organizada en el nivel local, estatal y nacional para animar a los ciudadanos a participar en el gobierno. Mientras que nosotros como la Leña estudiamos y tomamos posiciones sobre temas, nunca apoyamos o respaldamos a partidos políticos o candidatos. Las opiniones expresadas en este foro son las de los candidatos, no de la Leña de las Mujeres de Voto de Rochester o ningún socio o patrocinador de este foro. Y la patrocinación del foro no es un apoyo a ningún candidato. Es nuestro propósito en patrocinar este foro proporcionarle la oportunidad de escuchar a los candidatos discutir cuestiones en face a face que son importantes para ustedes. Las preguntas de esta noche provienen de la Leña de las Mujeres de Voto de Rochester, la publicidad de la Comisión de Comercio y los miembros del público. Si quieren enviar preguntas para futuros foros, visite nuestra página de Facebook, Leña de las Mujeres de Voto de Rochester, Minnesota, para obtener información. Deben ser enviados al menos 48 horas en advance de un foro. Como nunca hay tiempo suficiente para cubrir todos los temas en un contexto limitado como este, por favor, hagan libre de contactar directamente la sede de la campaña de los candidatos si sus preguntas no se han abordado esta noche. Nos gustaría agradecer a todos los candidatos por correr por el cargo, por ofrecer servicio a su comunidad y por la enorme dedicación, tiempo y compromiso que correr y servir exigen. Encorajamos a nuestros miembros como individuos, como encorajamos a cada uno de ustedes a involucrarse en su comunidad y en el partido político de su elección. Bienvenidos a la foro de esta noche, que presenta a los candidatos para el Consejo de la Ciudad de Rochester, Ward 6. Los candidatos para esta posición son Donovan Bailey, Molly Dennis, David Dirks, Todd Pisarsky, Thomas Rigby y Craig Uglund. Tenemos un candidato, el Sr. Dirks, que no pudo asistir esta noche. Cada candidato tendrá dos minutos para ofrecer una declaración de abertura. Los candidatos responderán en su vez a las preguntas proporcionadas por la Leña de las Mujeres de Voto de Rochester, los socios de esta noche y el público que fueron enviados en advance. Cada candidato tendrá un minuto para responder. El candidato tendrá luego dos minutos cada uno para hacer una declaración de cierre. Me gustaría sugerir a los candidatos que hagan su respuesta lo más succincte posible. No es necesario usar el minuto entero para darnos su respuesta. Pero si su tiempo se acaba y está en medio de una frase, adelante y termina su frase. Nos gustaría cubrir tantas preguntas como sea posible. Y te diré que hace dos noches cubrimos 14 preguntas, lo que no será posible con tantos candidatos, pero es un objetivo. El guardián del tiempo esta noche es miembro de la Leña de las Mujeres de Voto, Amy Cockett. Las preguntas del público fueron verificadas para asegurarse de que siguen nuestras guías por parte de los miembros de la Leña de las Mujeres de Voto de Rochester, Maggie Brima John, Jane Callahan y Kathy Swessel. Nuestras preguntas fueron ofrecidas por la publicidad de la Comisión de Comercio y me preguntarán las preguntas para todos. Vamos a comenzar con las declaraciones de abertura de los candidatos. Han dibujado números aleatorios para determinar el orden en el que hablan y el candidato Uglund comenzará.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Craig Uglund. Hay tres puntos a recordar esta noche. Número uno, estoy aquí para recuperar la confianza con nuestro Consejo de la Ciudad. Número dos, estoy aquí para mejorar la comunicación y colaboración de nuestros gobiernos y gobiernos de estado. Y número tres, estoy solicitando su voto antes o después de agosto 11. Quiero agradecer a la Leña de las Mujeres de Voto, la publicidad de la Comisión de Comercio y todas las otras candidatas por estar aquí esta noche. Esta es una raza no partidaria. No me están presionando por ningún partido. Esto no es una carrera para mí, esto es servicio civil. Planeo hacer mi tiempo para mi comunidad y cuando sea hora de mí hacerlo, voy a seguir. Estoy corriendo porque nací y crecí en Ward 6 y estoy aquí para representar al pueblo de Ward 6 y todo Rochester. No me gusta la dirección en la que ha ido nuestro Consejo de la Ciudad y siento que 有一些改变是必须的. He estado involucrado con nuestra comunidad y nuestra región durante los últimos 15 años. Más recientemente, ayudé a fundar la Asociación de la Comunidad de Alton Hills. El pasado otoño, dirigí el grupo Take Back Our Streets para eliminar la dieta de las calles en Alton Hills Drive. Además de eso, he sido miembro de la Guardia Patriota de Minnesota y actualmente soy el capitán estatal y en el board de directores. También soy fundador de The Heroes Ride junto con algunos otros gente. También soy parte de la Beyond the Old River in Southeast Minnesota, participo en TDA for the troops, soy fundador de la Youth Hockey Military Scholarship en el Fondo de Salud de Curtis M. Swenson. También soy miembro activo de la Asociación de los Reporteros de Minnesota, P.O.W., M.R.A., Asociación. Como dueño, vivo según nuestra cuota de ética y eso incluye honestidad, responsabilidad, comunicación, responsabilidad, negociación justa y conocimiento de nuestra gran comunidad. Soy esposo, soy padre, soy hijo y soy hermano legal y estoy aquí para servir Ward 6. Gracias.
Gracias. Vamos a la candidata Rigby, por favor.
Buenas noches, me gustaría agradecer a la Leña de las Mujeres de Voto, la publicidad de la Comisión de Comercio y a todos los espectadores en Internet que están viendo esto. Realmente aprecio la oportunidad de poder hablar contigo y hablar de cosas de interés en Ward 6. He vivido en Ward 6 durante siete años y estoy descubriendo lo grande que es un ward realmente cuando lo paso por poner anillos de puerta sobre todas las puertas de todos. Y realmente amo el hecho de que el ward es diverso, el hecho de que hay tantos saludos y abiertos y señales de bienvenida para que todos lo vean. Parece ser un barrio muy cálido. La razón por la que elegí correr por el Consejo de la Ciudad, hay dos grandes razones, muchos otros, pero la primera es los impuestos de propiedad. Habiendo vivido en Ward 6 durante siete años, mis impuestos de propiedad han subido un 39% en esos siete años. Eso es más de 5.5% por año y parece que es bastante. Ahora, reconozco que eso no es solo la ciudad, es el distrito escolar y el condado también. Pero creo que las tres autoridades de impuestos en Rochester deberían poder trabajar juntos para mantener los incrementos en el impuesto de propiedad a un ritmo inferior a lo que son. La otra razón es que he servido como miembro del board de 125 Live durante cuatro años y media. Los últimos tres y medio como tesoro. Como muchos de ustedes saben, cuando 125 Live se mudó del castillo a la nueva construcción en el centro de la rec. teníamos algunas dificultades financieras. Como tesoro del board, trabajé con el Consejo de la Ciudad y aprendí sobre cómo opera y a veces no pensé que fuera muy simple y me gustaría estar por dentro donde pueda ayudar a otras organizaciones a lidiar con la ciudad. Gracias.
Gracias. Candidato Bailey.
Gracias, Leña de las Mujeres de Voto, la Biblioteca Pública de Rochester, la Comisión de Comercio y la publicidad de la Comisión de la Comisión de la Comercio por esta maravillosa oportunidad. De nuevo, mi nombre es Donovan Bailey, corriendo por el Consejo de la Ciudad de Rochester Ward 6. Pueden ver mi sitio web, Facebook y otras redes sociales para estar al día conmigo. He vivido en esta comunidad durante aproximadamente 20 años. He trabajado como trabajador social para el Oficio de Defensa Pública durante aproximadamente 13 años. Mi educación, soy un trabajador social, trabajador social licenciado. Tengo un máster en educación y liderazgo y actualmente trabajo en mi doctorado en servicios sociales y de la comunidad. Mi experiencia de voluntariado, realmente estoy emocionado por una oportunidad que obtengo cada verano. Trabajo como trabajador social y consejero de campo para el campamento de calentamiento de Colorado de Denver en Estes Park, en Chili Camp. Y esa oportunidad es una oportunidad de inundación que obtengo para trabajar con jóvenes víctimas de calentamiento. Además de eso, he tenido mucho trabajo de comunidad dentro de esta comunidad. Fui gobernador electo al Consejo de Minnesota de Antejo de la Raza de Africanos. Localmente, trabajo en el tercer distrito de Comité de Justicia Equidad, la Comisión de Asesoramiento de Corregiones del condado de Almtown, el Comité de Asesoramiento de Team Challenge, y también otros comités localmente, como una de nuestras instalaciones de jóvenes aquí localmente. Una de las cosas por las que estoy realmente orgulloso, el año pasado pudimos trabajar con un grupo de personas increíbles. Fui privilegiado para liderar esto para llevar Martin Luther King Park a Rochester, Minnesota. Estoy pasionado por traer toda esa experiencia al Consejo de la Ciudad de Rochester en la plataforma de la competencia cultural.
Gracias. Y candidato Dennis.
Hola, soy Molly Dennis y amo la biblioteca. Solo quería dar un aplauso para el playlist de verano para mis hijos. Quiero decirles, agradecimiento sincero a la Leña de las Mujeres de Voto y la Comisión de Comercio y la publicidad de la Comisión de la Comisión de la Comercio, pero especialmente para todos aquellos que están escuchando y participando en la democracia. He enseñado en el extranjero y sé que muchos en el mundo no tienen esta oportunidad. Estoy emocionada y nerviosa, así que tengo algunas notas, pero estoy demasiado bendecida por estar aquí. Cuando era pequeña, mis hermanas y yo juzgábamos quién tendría que hacer nuestros desafíos y en respuesta, mis padres decían: "Hacemos desafíos porque somos parte de una familia". Era una responsabilidad que teníamos. Somos parte de la familia de la humanidad y todos tenemos un obligado de ayudar a los demás, parte de una comunidad. Siempre he dicho a mis hijos: "Si quieren saber si son suerte, simplemente detén y respira". Y ahora esto tiene un significado completamente nuevo. Estamos en medio de una crisis, una crisis que tratará de traer cambio y, con suerte, oportunidades. Si la oportunidad golpea y necesitamos contratar a alguien que tenga... Si la oportunidad no golpea, necesitamos contratar a alguien que tenga experiencia para construir puentes, conectar a la gente y trabajar en la llave para construir una puerta para esa oportunidad. Literalmente he construido casas para Habitat for Humanity, longer tables para hospedar las reuniones nacionales. He organizado caminos de comida, donaciones, he voluntariado para Marcha Dimes, Special Olympics, Mayo Hospice durante diez años. He adoptado carreteras, soy líder de Girl Scout. He servido en muchos comités de voluntariado, y entiendo el poder de la comunidad. Lo más importante, me importa profundamente a la gente y el gobierno es gente. Le doy賀誓a de construir las puertas de oportunidad para que si alguien golpea, sean capaces de lograrlo. Gracias.
Gracias. Candidato Pisarsky.
Buenas noches. Primero, quiero agradecer a todos los patrocinadores de este evento y a aquellos que no están aquí, que podrían estar viendo. Pero estoy aquí esta noche para que puedan aprender algo sobre mí y, con suerte, puedo ganar su apoyo, su voto, para ser el próximo miembro del Consejo de la Ciudad de Ward 6. Así que me alojé aquí en Rochester hace aproximadamente ocho años para estar con mi pareja de vida, Christine. Soy un oficial de ejército retirado. Serví 20 años de servicio activo. La mayor parte de mi vida adulta he sido un serviente público. Además de mi carrera militar, como auditor con la oficina de auditoría legislativa de Minnesota, auditorizando el estado. Entiendo el gobierno, entiendo la supervisión del gobierno. Soy un CPA licenciado y examinador de fraude certificado. También he estado en el sector público como gerente corporativo y como gerente corriendo parte de una planta de acero. Estoy involucrado en la comunidad, soy miembro de la Junta de voluntariado de la Lotus Health Foundation y asisto a los miembros del Club de Veterans de la Guerra de la Rochester. Sono más orgulloso de mis dos hijos mayores, mi hija, graduada de la Academia de Marinos de Estados Unidos, ahora oficial de la Costa de Estados Unidos, y mi hijo, estudiante de Troy University en Alabama. Creo que el cargo político es un deber civil y no debería confundirse como una carrera o profesión. Actualmente, creo que el Consejo existente ha perdido contacto con los residentes, continuando a buscar formas de aumentar los impuestos, reducir los servicios y ignorar las necesidades y deseos de los residentes.
Nuestra primera pregunta va a provenir de la Leña de las Mujeres de Voto y el orden en el que hablamos es candidato Dennis, seguida por candidato Bailey, y luego te daré un aviso mientras vamos. Así que para el candidato Dennis será nuestro primer orador. ¿Cómo planeas involucrar a tus constituents, la juventud de Rochester y las asociaciones de la ciudad, para informar su toma de decisiones?
Perdón. Esta es la fundación del gobierno, es comunicarse, ser capaz de informar y conectar a los demás. Y creo que cuando me electo, tendría diferentes medios de comunicación constantes. No todos tienen acceso a la tecnología, así que necesitamos hacer lo máximo que podemos para ser seguros y reuniones Zoom y cosas informativas semanales para sacar lo que hemos hecho, como con las reuniones de pueblo y conexión. Pero también necesitamos tener en persona, seguros. Como maestro de biología, si conectas tu cerebro con un MRI, tus ondas cerebrales, los neuronas mirables, se sincronizarán. Y si no tenemos conexión, perdemos la conexión con la humanidad. Así que para responder a la pregunta para la juventud y para involucrar a la gente, haría muchas cosas que he hecho, como mencioné justo ahora, conectar, construir tablas, construir puentes y invitar a la gente a participar en la democracia. Gracias.
Gracias. Y candidato Bailey, serás seguido por candidato Pisarsky. Repetiré la pregunta: ¿Cómo planeas involucrar a tus constituents, la juventud de Rochester y las asociaciones de la ciudad, para informar su toma de decisiones?
Planeo continuar con lo que hago ahora con las redes sociales. Esa es una gran manera de conectar con la gente, ciertamente en este momento de COVID-19. También planeo continuar con mi podcast, una oportunidad de outreach a la gente. Pero otra cosa que planeo hacer es tener reuniones semanales e oportunidad abierta para que la gente siempre venga a mí. Tengo una ubicación para que la gente venga a mí en una de nuestras tiendas de barba. Así que eso es lo que planeo hacer. Y luego, terceramente, o cuartamente, planeo tener reuniones o, con suerte, nosotros como Consejo de la Ciudad podemos tomar reuniones a la gente, a sus diferentes lugares de establecimiento, para asegurarnos de que estamos comunicando con la gente. Gracias.
Gracias. Y candidato Pisarsky, y serás seguido por candidato Rigby. ¿Te gustaría que repitiera la pregunta?
Sí, por favor.
¿Cómo planeas involucrar a tus constituents, la juventud de Rochester y las asociaciones de la ciudad, para informar su toma de decisiones?
Creo que una de las grandes formas de hacer eso es ser visible, ser visible en la comunidad, asistir a esas reuniones, asistir a esas reuniones de la comunidad, ser abierto en las redes sociales. Pero creo que esa es una de las cosas que falta ahora. Creo que los residentes están hablando, pero nadie está escuchando. Así que escucharé a los residentes. Los residentes son los expertos.
Gracias. Candidato Rigby, serás seguido por candidato Uglund. ¿Te gustaría que repitiera la pregunta?
No, está bien. Gracias. Hay muchas formas de involucrar a todo el pueblo de Ward 6 en las decisiones de política invocándolos a través de redes sociales, haciendo horas de café, viajando, la gestión de la gente es una gran cosa a hacer. Tengo un perro que camina a menudo en la ciudad y estaría más que feliz de parar y visitar a la gente mientras camino por la ciudad. Así que hay... Y en cuanto a, creo que las organizaciones específicas a las que llegaría proactivamente por correo electrónico o post de Facebook o lo que sea que encuentre que funcione mejor para obtener la información de las reuniones o decisiones que involucrarían a ellos.
Gracias. Y candidato Uglund. ¿Te gustaría que repitiera la pregunta? No, no.
Escucha, escucha y luego escucha. Como muchos de los otros candidatos han dicho, cosas básicas como redes sociales, discusiones de travesía, conversaciones de travesía, mi número de teléfono está ahí, 507-259-2608. Llámame. Si no lo respondo, porque estoy con un cliente o en medio de algo, te devolveré tu llamada. Reuniones semanales y o mensuales alrededor del ward. También me encantaría hacer charlas de lado, asistir a las diferentes reuniones de las asociaciones de la ciudad. No hay muchas en Ward 6, pero creo que hay tres o cuatro. Como ha dicho Todd, nuestros residentes son los profesionales y ellos saben lo que hay en Ward 6. Así que, de nuevo, escucha, escucha y luego escucha más.
Gracias. Nuestra siguiente pregunta proviene de la publicidad de Rochester. Candidato Bailey comenzará, seguida por candidato Dennis. La pregunta es: "El alcalde y el Consejo de la Ciudad recientemente discutieron recomendaciones de la comunidad para cambios locales en la policía. ¿Qué cambios recomendarías respecto a las operaciones locales de la policía?"
Gracias. En primer lugar, quiero agradecer al alcalde y a nuestra policía y al sheriff por hacer algunas cosas buenas para salir de allí desde el punto de vista de un dashboard, getting social workers into the fray. Oigo que algunas otras posiciones están siendo pensadas para lidiar con el tema de la policía. Así que creo que hemos hecho un gran trabajo saltando allí. Sin embargo, añadiría estas cosas y he estado vocal sobre eso. Necesitamos cambiar nuestro proceso académico de la policía para que la gente pueda obtener su licencia de policía gratis, mucho como el ejército, pero a la misma nivel que el título de asistente. Y también he llamado a la prevención de crímenes, la actualización del departamento de prevención de crímenes, para tener más social workers y están haciendo eso. Pero como digo eso, tenemos tres social workers que ahora trabajan dentro del departamento de la policía. Tenemos un gran problema allí. Es una buena idea, pero todos son euroamericanos o blancos. Cuando pensamos en los problemas que provocaron este cambio, fue debido a Black Lives Matter. Necesitamos minorías y personas de cultura en esas posiciones. Gracias.
Gracias. Y candidato Dennis.
Soy una gran fan del departamento de la policía de Rochester. El jefe Franklin mencionó cómo necesitamos contratar a personas de integridad porque siempre puedes enseñar habilidades. Creo que con la mayoría de las profesiones también necesitamos contratar a personas de integridad. Y el departamento de la policía de Rochester está haciendo un trabajo maravilloso con el plan del 21º siglo Obama de la policía. Es un gran comienzo, pero creo que todo está basado en relaciones. Así que si miras cómo están asociados con la medicina, la CPR, siendo los primeros respondientes, esas son cosas maravillosas. Pero si tienes un incendio, llama al estación de incendios. Si tienes un ambulante, llama al ambulante. Si tienes una emergencia social, alguien está bañándose en una fuentena, necesitas tener a un social worker, alguien que está entrenado, porque esa persona puede tener algunos necesidades de salud mental o puede ser inútil o puede tener otros problemas y la policía no es necesariamente entrenada en todo. Así que necesitamos especialistas junto con la policía, social workers y los SROs que tienen experiencia en el distrito escolar con niños para construir esas relaciones. Gracias.
Gracias. Y candidato Uglund, misma pregunta. "El alcalde y el Consejo de la Ciudad recientemente discutieron recomendaciones de la comunidad para cambios locales en la policía. ¿Qué cambios recomendarías respecto al departamento de la policía local?"
Primero y ante todo, quiero agradecer a Donovan. Usted es un ex oficial de la policía y te agradezco por eso. No es un trabajo fácil ser en la policía, especialmente ahora. Personalmente, creo que necesitamos dejar de vilificar a nuestra policía y a nuestra policía como un todo. Hay malos arboles en todos los aspectos de nuestras comunidades. Y sí, son una mala policía, pero la gran mayoría está tratando de protegernos. Todo lo que quieren hacer es ir a casa y ver a su familia al final de la noche y necesitamos ser respetuosos con eso. En cuanto a mejorar la policía local, el jefe Franklin y el sheriff Parkinson han hecho un gran trabajo. Creo que están muy por encima de las organizaciones de la policía promedio. Pero creo que necesitamos aumentar nuestra formación de crisis para nuestros oficiales de la policía, que muy bien puede haber cambiado el resultado con Albert Dashill hace unos años en Cub Foods. También creo que necesitamos continuar e incluso aumentar nuestros oficiales de recursos escolares, ya que son la primera línea de defensa, por supuesto, para nuestros estudiantes en el sistema escolar y son los que empiezan ese desarrollo de la relación. Gracias.
Gracias. Y candidato Pisarsky.
Así que creo que algunos otros gente han dicho y he oído en otros lugares, desde muchos grupos de comunidad, que el jefe Franklin ha recibido muchos accolades de varias personas. Te saludo por ser un oficial de la policía. Gracias. Pero escuché algo sobre relaciones y quiero ver a la ciudad empezar a usar todos estos caminos de bicicleta y carreras que los residentes han estado pagando. Así que me gustaría ver a los oficiales de la policía salir de los vehículos, ir en una bicicleta y empezar a caminar en bicicleta y reuniéndose con los residentes, mucho menos autoritario. He visto muchos vehículos de policía arriba y abajo las carreteras, pero aún no he encontrado uno en las calles, en un camino de bicicleta, en una trama, nowhere. Así que me gustaría verlos construir esa relación al salir del vehículo y empezar a reunirse con los residentes.
Gracias. Y candidato Rigby.
Bueno, es casi una fiesta de amor aquí para el Departamento de la Policía de Rochester y tengo la tendencia de estar de acuerdo con lo que he oído hasta ahora. Tuve la oportunidad de escuchar la semana pasada al alcalde Norton y el jefe de la policía Franklin dar su reporte al Consejo de la Ciudad para hablar del dashboard. Una de las cosas que aprendí durante ese reporte que nunca realmente he pensado en este modo es que la policía son solo miembros de la comunidad que están allí para aplicar las leyes que todos nos gustaría ver aplicadas. Y son personas como nosotros y lo que sería muy útil, creo, como la gente ha hablado es que la policía tome el tiempo para salir en la comunidad, ya sea caminando en bicicleta o jugando basketball con la juventud o como sea que elijan hacerlo, que salgan y se mezclen con la gente y sepan conocer a ellos para que cuando haya una crisis, la gente de la comunidad los conozca también. Y tenía algo más. Pero mi tiempo está por acabar, así que lo dejaré ahí y solo diré que creo que la policía de Rochester hace un buen trabajo.
Gracias. Nuestra siguiente pregunta proviene de la Comisión de Comercio. El orden de oradores será, y creo que te voy a nombrar en orden y luego te recuerde antes de que vayas, candidato Pisarsky, seguido por candidato Uglund, y luego candidato Rigby, candidato Bailey y candidato Dennis. Así que... So we're beginning with candidate Pesarsky, and the question is this. "As you are aware, the COVID-19 pandemic has resulted in millions of Americans being furloughed or laid off, including many in our local community. In the face of these historic unemployment numbers, what steps would you take as a member of the Rochester City Council to promote the creation of jobs and help put Rochester citizens back to work?"
So I think this is probably one of the number-one issues within our community. And the reason I say that is because it does not only have to do about COVID. And this is a cornerstone of, one of the cornerstones of my platform. Because right now, Rochester has all their eggs in one basket. We call it DMC. And when something cracks in that infrastructure, the whole basket becomes, starts smelling like rotten eggs. So our economy is very fragile, and that's, and the comprehensive plan even calls for more low-wage workers who will be dependent on subsidies. So we should begin to identify those industrial areas here within Rochester and begin planning in the development of the infrastructure to invite growth companies with meaningful compensation.
Thank you. And candidate Euglen.
Just this week, the city acted on the CARES Act funding that came down from the feds and the state, and that's a great start. And I think that we need to make sure that those funds are focused on our small businesses and, of course, getting people back to work. But they need to be pinpoint-focused. That money cannot be used for projects other than protecting our businesses and getting people back to work. Planting trees for potential job loss is not the intention of that CARE project. As far as getting, creating new jobs, that's always been a struggle in Rochester. We were kind of a two-horse town. We're pretty much a one-horse town, but we need to be welcoming to other businesses. Instead of businesses leaving town because their property taxes are going through the roof, we need to incentivize businesses to come into Rochester, whether it's manufacturing or whatnot. And we also need to concentrate on getting people to get above their earning, their under earning potential and get them into things like the trades through mentorships and whatnot. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Rigby, and you are followed by candidate Bailey. Can I repeat the question for you? "As you are aware, the COVID-19 pandemic has resulted in millions of Americans being furloughed or laid off, including many in our local community. In the face of these historic unemployment numbers, what steps would you take as a member of the city council to promote the creation of jobs and help put Rochester citizens back to work?"
Well, there's a lot of things that need to be done, a lot of people that need to go back to work. The hospitality industry has been hit badly, restaurants, of course, and the bars. So it's just a really difficult problem. I like the CARES Act, the way the money is being distributed. I like the fact that $1 million is going to small businesses. That should help those businesses get started, restarted, and hire their people back. I like the fact that there is money going for jobs in the form of tree planting and such, because I think that's been really misunderstood by people. That's a job creation act. It's not a boondoggle to do a project that the city couldn't do otherwise. It's to get people working so that they can go out in the community and spend money at the small businesses. And finally, I would continue to promote the green initiative and the jobs that would come with that as we move to a city that's 100% reliable upon renewable energy.
Thank you. And candidate Bailey. I can. "As you are aware, the COVID-19 pandemic has resulted in millions of Americans being furloughed or laid off, including many in our local community. In the face of these historic unemployment numbers, what steps would you take as a member of the city council to promote the creation of jobs and help put us back to work?"
I think aligning with federal and state government, the CARES Act is here, and that's certainly going to help us out with regard to jobs, small business, and we need to respect our small businesses. Also incentivizing businesses to come to our area, I think that's something we need to improve on with regard to DMC. But the bitter pill of this time, I think this is one of the challenges we have nationally and locally. We are in a pandemic, and we're going to have to buckle down and realize we're in that. And in regards to that, what things do we need to do to sustain ourselves through this time? And again, I do support the CARES Act incentivizing businesses to come here, but I think we do need to realize we are in a very, very tough time. We have to buckle down and get through it. Lastly, I think we need to reimagine DMC and what it means to our community. This is a business model, supposed to grow in 20 years. What can it do, if possible, and I may be speaking from ignorance, to help businesses grow here? It is a model to grow our city. What can DMC do? How can there be a paradigm shift to build Rochester during this very tough time?
Thank you. And candidate Dennis.
I agree with Mr. Bailey that this is a precedent time, and it's a time that we can actually reimagine. We don't have to have, you know, preset, well, this is, you know, jobs are changing, infrastructure is changing, DMC is bringing a lot of new people here. I believe we need, as a city, need to, like the Chamber of Commerce has done, they have done a great job of buying locally. We need to hire locally. We need to go in and research contractors, research people of color who own the companies. And we need to bring people to the table, have round tables for small businesses so that the middleman is cut away and the city council can talk directly to the small businesses. We need to lobby St. Paul to lower the commercial taxes to help those small businesses. That needs to be a priority. We need to work with education. We need to collaborate with government agencies. We need to get talented voices together to find solutions. I believe strongly that we can come out of this better because we have so many amazing people that we can bring together. And women, minorities, people who have not been able to have these opportunities in leadership need to have this amazing time to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, candidate, you can stay right there, because you're going to be first on the next question. Okay. All right. Next question is coming from the League of Women Voters. Our first one revolves around housing. The order in which I'm going to ask you questions is candidate Dennis, followed by Rigby, then candidate Bailey, candidate Euglen, and candidate Pesarsky. So beginning with candidate Dennis. "The planning department has grants to help people with limited assets to perform needed maintenance on their homes. Currently, the fund has enough money to help 10 to 12 people per year. In light of the need for more affordable housing in the city, do you support increasing the amount budgeted to this fund?"
Oh, yes. Yes, of course. I believe that in a time of crisis is when government needs to help the people the most. So we need to find that money, look at other revenues if needed, but yes, we need to keep people above water. This is one storm that we're all in. We're in the racial unveiling that has, here, we have the pandemic, we have mental health crises. We have so many people who are struggling to keep their head above water, and we need to look at ourselves, how we've benefited. We have to go to them, their tables, and see what barriers they have, and use government for that to help people. I have mentioned in other posts about my friend who ended his life because of the loss of hope. Mental health is a serious matter. We are creating an incredible epidemic of trauma with children now out of school. This is something, if we could put a price tag on the epigenetic, the trauma that's going to be in generations to come, the crime, the issues in the future, we would put a lot of money right now to help people stay above water. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Rigby. I can. "The planning department has grants to help people with limited assets to perform needed maintenance on their homes. Currently, the fund has enough money to help 10 to 12 people per year. In light of the need of more affordable housing in the city, do you support increasing the amount budgeted to this fund?"
I probably would. I would have to look at that in the context of the complete budget and where, what else we can increase, what else we're cutting. You know, it's really a great program. As I have walked through Ward 6, I could see where there are some houses that could use this money for repairs. So it's a good thing. It's really a great idea. It's just a matter of prioritizing it along with everything else.
Thank you. And candidate Bailey.
I truly believe, and I've said this on my podcast and in my campaign, there are three issues that's going to be guiding every leader, perhaps for the next one to two, maybe four years. That's COVID-19, the civic unrest that we need to challenge, and also what type of city Rochester wants to be. To your question, I do say yes. However, with regard to that and with this idea of what type of city we want to be, we need to make sure that we're not putting Band-Aids on issues. As we think about affordable housing and the various things that we have done and will do, we need to reimagine how we really want to do this, because we're good at, in our community, putting Band-Aids on issues to hopefully meet issues, but I think there needs to be a broader understanding of what type of city do we want to become? Essential workers will be in these types of housing. They've shown us that they've helped our community. What are we going to do to help them to sustain their lives in this community? And I would say we don't just need affordable housing, we need affordable living, which would call for an upgrade in how we pay folks in a higher minimum wage. So I think there needs to be an overarching, bigger look at this idea of affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Euglen.
So I'm not going to consider this question as referring to affordable housing, but actually fixing people's houses. And I think that our city needs to focus on what the city is here to do, and that's safety, public works, parks and trails, and to some extent, economic development. What I would like to see our city do is to support the organizations that specialize in these things. Three Rivers Cap, this is what they do. They assist people with energy, shortfalls on their bills, they help people with home repairs, things like that. So I think sometimes the city needs to learn to step back, support the organizations that do this for a living, per se. Support them, whether it be financially or whatever, and just get out of the way and let them do their thing. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Pesarsky.
So I've said in other forms, very similar to what Greg said, is our community providers, they are specialists in this. That is part of their missions, and that is what they do. They have sources of funds, perhaps not to repair everybody's house or home or shelter, but it certainly could help to make a dent in the problem. And again, we've heard, we don't want to put a Band-Aid on a problem, so we have to look a little bit larger, step back. What's really taking place within our community that somebody cannot repair their home?
Thank you. Our next question will involve environment. Candidate Rigby will be first, followed by candidate Bailey, then candidate Dennis, candidate Pesarsky, and candidate Euglen. So candidate Rigby. "What is your commitment to increased green energy, especially as our city's RPU contract with the SMMPA is reaching an end?"
My commitment to renewable energy and what RPU should do is that as its contract ends, and we work towards 100% renewable energy by 2030, that we should look only for contracts with companies that have the renewable energy. That it is clear from the way the planet is behaving that we need to do something to lessen the temperature, and by focusing on not only renewable energy through what RPU does, but through what all we do at home, through electric cars and whatever it might be to encourage less climate warming, that's the tack we should take.
Thank you. Candidate Bailey. "What is your commitment to increased green energy, especially as our city's RPU contract with SMMPA is reaching an end?"
Thank you. This is one of those paradigm shift questions. As our nation goes, so goes our local area. But we've been doing a great job here locally. At least we have great plans. Mayor Brady set up some good plans for renewable energy and those types of things. Mayor Norton's following suit. And as I've reviewed the DMC plan, they're doing a great job. They have a great structure around making sure we stay in a renewable concept. So I would say just follow through with what we have written down and what has been led via Mayor Brady, Mayor Norton, and DMC. But I would say that we have to keep this within the paradigm shift idea and also add landmarks to this idea of renewable energy. What do we want to see in 2022, 2024, 2030, and making sure we reach those milestones? Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Dennis.
All right. Thank you. The environment is everyone's issue, should be on everyone's platform in every election. We have one planet, and this planet keeps us alive. And so that is definitely a priority. When I go eat at my children's cafeterias, they use disposable trays. When I go to community events like the police department's Safe City Nights, they don't have recycling at any of those events. I asked a lot of the officers, I'm like, we have a million different beverages that are giving away free and encouraging people to attend, which is wonderful, but there's no recycling. How can we say that we are for the city of Rochester's future and not prioritize the environment? If you look at even the buildings, for instance, like Riverside versus Gibbs, when we built Riverside, of course, a little earlier, Gibbs hired their mechanical engineer before they hired their architect. So the geothermal engineering, it's half the energy used. And I work at Riverside, so it's a beautiful building as well. But we need to build and treat everything we do with the environment in mind. So yes, I support and I would enhance all of the environmental regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Pesarsky. Can I repeat the question for you?
Yes, please.
Okay. "What is your commitment to increased green energy, especially as our city's RPU contract with SMMPA is reaching an end?"
You know, even though I did not live in Minnesota in my youth, I used to come up to Minnesota to use the lakes, to use the outdoors. So I enjoy the resources, natural resources here in Minnesota. There is no other place like it. I thought I heard or read somewhere recently, Excel Energy said that they will be completely off fossil fuels in the very near future. So I think if RPU is still at a shortfall, they may need to look at what are others doing to get there. But we also have to look at the cost versus benefits, and where do those paths cross? So we still have to... benefits, and where do those paths cross. So we still have to ask ourselves, is the timeline originally set still valid, or does there need to be some adjustment?
Thank you. And candidate Uglund?
It's always important to watch out for our environment and what's best to leave a minimal impact, if not for us, for our children and our grandchildren. Last year, RPU celebrated their 100th anniversary, and I had a chance of a lifetime to go tour the power plant out at Lake Zumbrow. That place was built for a third generator, and that spot has sat empty for 100 years, or from the day it was built. So I think RPU should look at getting in their generator out there. Todd had alluded to this as well. We do have to be cognizant of the increased costs for the new energy sources that will adversely affect our low-income and our fixed-income citizens. We must be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Uglund, you can stay right there. You're actually first on the next list, too. The next question involves inequality in the community. Candidate Uglund will be first, candidate Dennis next, candidate Rigby third, candidate Pesarsky will be fourth, and candidate Bailey will be fifth. Okay, the question is, how do you plan to ensure that all residents, not just legal citizens, are aware of their rights? This question makes an assumption.
That's a great question. I haven't heard that asked before, so I am going to have to go off the cuff on this one. I think that's going to be part of our community in educating people on what their rights are, whether that be contact with law enforcement, community education. Rochester's had a great community education program well before I grew up as a kid in this town. So I think we need to make those opportunities available. They do have to have the drive to educate themselves, but we need to make sure that that opportunity is there for them to learn.
Thank you. Candidate Dennis?
All right. I like the analogy of boats, because I feel like we are in a storm and uncertain times right now. When it comes to boats, the analogy is that we are all isolated on our own boat together in the storm, and we all have holes and barriers, but we need to understand what the barriers are. So I might have a barrier, you know, and I'm on this boat, and some of the issues might be language, some of them might be economics, some of them might be cultural, where maybe they don't all know when they come here. Other people have different welcoming into our city. We need to use education to be at the forefront. We need to go in, in the schools, have the families who will come in to Rochester feel welcome, everyone welcome. I feel when we collaborate with the schools and the county and the city, we can bring that information right away to residents. We can go to their table and see what barriers are keeping them from knowing their rights. And it's our duty to make sure that everyone can participate in government. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Rigby?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Yes. Oh, maybe. I'm working ahead. How do you plan to ensure that all residents, not just legal citizens, are aware of their rights?
Well, recently, I heard of a program, and I'm not recalling where it was at this time, where someone was going to the citizenship classes to go beyond what just people would learn to be a citizen and help them to understand their rights. I think that that should be something that is done on a regular basis for everyone who is, including those who are not citizens, that classes should be offered. This could be done a number of ways. One is that the just flat, someone in the city social work could host a class in it. Another way is to go out, reach out to the services, such as a Lutheran family service that works a lot with people coming, refugees coming in, and help them to get the tools to instruct people in their rights as they're coming into the U.S.
Thank you. And candidate Pesarsky?
Again, we've heard several organizations named Lutheran Services, I think Catholic Charities, a couple others. These are our community providers. This is what they do. They do this day in, day out. We need to leverage their capability to be able to reach to these individuals so they know. You know, one of the things I did as an auditor, I would audit many, many programs. And one thing that I would, a question would always exist, was a citizen. However, if there's a child there, well, then the child qualifies. And sometimes that is not always known. But I think one of the items, one of the barriers is language. I met a gentleman yesterday, Hussein. He's from Iraq. He's an Iraqi. He received his citizenship four years ago. He's been a resident here for three years. But we had a little language difficulty, but we're able to figure it out.
And candidate Bailey, finally?
Rochester is an amazing city, and those of us that have moved here from other cities know that this is an amazing city. We have the largest employer in the state at 30,000-plus employees, with the third-largest city in this great state. We have an internationally renowned business in that of Mayo. It's a great place to be. Crime rates are low. This is an amazing town. We have diversity that's different than many other cities. However, we have a scar on our city. And to your question, we have no functional human rights commission. That is a stain on our local area. A city this renowned, as great as it is, does not have a human rights commission that has some force to it. Understandably, that was under Olmsted County. However, if Olmsted County cannot make sure that we have a functional and powerful human rights commission, the city should take it over. Other cities have done that around the nation. We do not have a strong human rights commission where they can take the lead in such things. This is an area that we need to improve in. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question revolves around youth in the community. We're going to begin with candidate Dennis, followed by candidate Rigby, then candidate Pesarsky, candidate Bailey, and finally, candidate Uglund. So candidate Dennis, how do you plan to involve youth in your decisions and ensure that their voices are heard?
Well, as a teacher, teaching high school biology and physical science, having taught overseas, many different countries, from China to Armenia, I just love curiosity, and I love the way, the energy, the, on Saturday, when the Rochester Initiative organized, orchestrated a forum, I would really just tap into that, you know, find out what interests, get them involved, you know, just be there, be part of it. I teach OWL, which is Our Whole Lives facilitator, at Mayo Clinic. I do a volunteer for the hospice, where for over 10 years, I facilitated a grief camp for children who have lost their parents and loved ones. And we do these healing circles where we say, we're not alone. We validate their fears, and we give them hope by telling they're part of this community. And we need to empower the youth. We need to let them know their voices are heard. We need to connect to them. I need to learn TikTok, I guess, too. I mean, we all need to work together to learn these new ways of communication so that we all feel part of this community together. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Rigby? How do you plan to involve youth in your decisions and ensure that their voice, views are heard?
Well, there's a lot of issues that the city deals with that youth should be involved in, I think, especially with the energy issue, the green issue. Rather than ridiculing youth that are going around and asking the older generations to take into account the environment and what's going on to the earth, we should be listening to them, and we should hear what they have to say, how they think things should be changed, because this is their planet and their future. I think this is more of a school district issue, but I certainly would have involved youth in the school as far as asking them whether the police should be in the schools or not, what they thought of having them there, as opposed to trying to make that decision as an adult looking down. So those are the types of things. Anytime the issue really reflects the young people, I would want to ask them how they thought about it.
Thank you. Candidate Pesarsky? Yes. How do you plan to involve youth in your decisions and ensure that their views are heard?
Yeah. So I think there is, one of the things, and we've said it before, a couple of us, we have to listen. We have to listen to what they're saying. This last weekend, some of us participated in the Rochester Community Initiative. We heard what they were saying, what they were talking about, the issues that are affecting them. You know, we have to be careful, because today's youth may be the ones that are pushing us around in a wheelchair one day. They may control our crutches. So it's important that we take care of them. They are going to replace us in life at some point in the future. Now, myself, I always ask my stepson, I call him my stepson, hey, what's going around in school right now? What's the topics? What are, what do your friends think about whatever the current topic of the day is?
Thank you. And candidate Bailey? How do you plan to involve youth in your decisions and ensure their views are heard?
First of all, I want to applaud our youth, much like Todd, the Rochester Community Initiative goosebump city on what you guys are doing, how you are leading our community. Keep on keeping on in that regard. Also, I want to applaud our sports initiatives in the city. I think we're doing a great job through our sports, through the city. But a couple of things I would do is involve in our Rochester Youth Commission. I believe we have one involving that. Then I want to steal an idea from Contrita Pullman, I believe, if I said her last name correct. She's running for Rochester County City Council, Ward 4, I believe. We were talking about this, and she had this idea of having an honorary youth council member to come to city council meetings to speak to issues of youth. That would be a great, I would be very supportive of having an honorary youth commission or council person on our city council to really represent our youth at the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Uglund?
As Todd said, and I had said prior, you simply need to listen. But how do we listen to them? How do we get in touch with our youth? I regurgitately couldn't make the event on Saturday. I had a yearly commitment. That's the third Saturday of every July every year. But I did hear great things about it. So how do we listen to our youth? I think it's a good idea for our council members to visit our schools. The council in general needs to collaborate much better with our school district. And in the paper a few weeks ago, speaking of school resource officers, there was an article written by the mayor of St. Charles, who was also a law enforcement officer. And the Minnesota Student Survey of 2019 has some statistics, and these are Rochester's statistics. They asked the students, do you like having school resource officers? And these numbers were very encouraging. 8th graders, 91%. 9th graders, 94%. And 11th graders, 95% of those students wanted school resource officers. Let's listen to those students.
Thank you. Our next question will involve budget issues. The order of questions will be candidate Bailey, then candidate Uglund, candidate Rigby, followed by candidate Dennis, and candidate Pesarsky. So, starting with candidate Bailey, for many years, the city's total budget has been growing at a rate exceeding the rate of inflation. Is this a problem? Inflation has been low recently. Would you be more concerned about increasing revenues or decreasing spending?
Thank you. As I said earlier, I think there are three issues that are really going to plague our city and leadership as well, vied for this position for Rochester City Council, Ward 6. And one of those is what type of city we want to be, COVID-19 and the civic unrest. As it relates to COVID-19, I really believe, I would go with the less spending approach. We really need to buckle down, think of essential services to get through this time with equity around that. I know in times past in our nation, when we've had to buckle down via war or some big issue like COVID-19, often those on the lower end of the spectrum do not get services and various things. So I would say spending reduction in light of our times, but also make sure it is equitable. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Uglund? Can I repeat it, or can I repeat the question?
Yes.
For many years, the city's total budget has been growing at a rate exceeding the rate of inflation. Is this a problem? Inflation has been low recently. Would you be more concerned about increasing revenues or decreasing spending?
Great question. I am very mindful that we need to reduce our spending. Our property tax rate didn't go up, but of course, in the real estate business, our property values have gone up. And that's a big struggle for people right now, especially those, again, low-income or on fixed incomes. We're looking at up to a $28 million deficit. We need to tighten our belts. We need to minimize any unnecessary community spending. We need to refocus on what the city is here for: safety, public works, parks, trails, and economic development. And there's some pretty big projects that I really think we need to pause. We need to pause the Bus Rapid Transit project. That project is going to cost us millions of dollars. And we don't know what's going to happen after the COVID crisis is calmed down. We need to really step back on that and see what our needs for Rochester are going to be in the next two years.
Thank you. Candidate Rigby? The city's total budget has been growing at a rate exceeding inflation. Is this a problem? Would you be more concerned about increasing revenues or decreasing spending?
Well, as I said in my introduction, one of the reasons I'm running is because I think the property taxes have gone up too much, and they're exactly what Craig said, which is it's not that the rate is going up, it's the value of the homes. And that's a stealth way of raising taxes, which is to say, well, we didn't raise the rate, but when you look at your bill, you see it's going up and wonder why. Well, it's because the value of your home went up, and that wasn't taken into account when they formulated the budget. I think that there are several specific things that should be reduced. And having said that, they're slipping my mind again. Maybe I need to take that test that President Trump did. Maybe you don't want me here. But there are, I know, big issues that should be looked at and that should be, the spending should be halted or delayed for the time being.
Thank you. Candidate Dennis.
Candidate, candidate Rigby, you forgot your mask again. Okay. Could you repeat the question? Yes. Thank you so much. For many years, the city's total budget has been growing at a rate exceeding the rate of inflation. Would you be concerned about increasing revenues or decreasing spending? And when I heard that question, it's kind of an interesting question, because they're not mutually exclusive. It's not, we don't have to do just one. It's not us versus them. I cut coupons, I shop at thrift stores, I know the value of a dollar. I know the value of a dollar. And I believe we need to look and cut wasteful spending, always cut wasteful spending. But when we look at our checkbooks, if you have a checkbook, the ledger of the checkbook shows our priorities. And the government's priority needs to be people, because that's what government does. It helps people. And during a time of crisis, we need to focus on that. So we do not need to cut spending. We need to find other revenue sources elsewhere. We need to look, be creative, have, I think outside the box. I don't necessarily agree with Mr. Uglund with the transit. I think many people don't have cars, and that we need to promote people to be able to have affordable transportation, affordable housing, look at how we can connect businesses, incentivize. We need to get more money to mental health and education and small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Pesarsky.
So we're somewhat fortunate here in Rochester. The city's growth rate has been strong. It's been high. Rochester is one of the fastest-growing cities in the state of Minnesota. It's also one of the fastest-growing in the United States. So with that growth, the government does need to grow a little, right? But we need to be smart about it, especially right now, because we really don't know how bad, bad is going to be when all this COVID stuff kind of washes, washes through. It may not be, we won't know until next year. It may not be, we know for another couple of years. You know, because when demand, when we talk, demand, when that outpaces supply, prices will generally go up. But what's going to happen within our commercial real estate property values with all the remote working taking place? Are those commercial properties in the downtown area, the DMC, going to have to be devalued?
Our next question is timely for our current crisis, and that being COVID. I'm going to start, actually, I should have left you up there, I'm sorry. Candidate Pesarsky, you're going to be first, followed by candidate Dennis, then candidate Uglund, candidate Rigby, and finally candidate Bailey. So candidate Pesarsky, what should Rochester be doing to address the enormous economic impacts of the coronavirus on residents and businesses?
Number one, again, all our aids are in one basket. When we have so many people reliant on one sector, really on one employer, that's when things go sour. And it's kind of going a little sour here in Rochester. Businesses are closing, people are furloughed. You know, we don't think about it, but when, when one of those bars or restaurants closes temporarily, what happens with those people that work there? Well, their income goes down. And now, the, that extra benefit from the federal government goes away at the end of this week. So I think we're going to really find out what's going to take place come the next month, maybe the next couple of months. But really, we need to diversify our economy now.
Thank you. Candidate Dennis, what should Rochester be doing to address the enormous economic impact of the coronavirus on residents and businesses?
Well, like I mentioned before with the local businesses, we need a lobby. We need to get together and get everyone on the round table and connect ideas, find innovative, creative ways of coming together, lobby for lessening the tax for small businesses. I also, I believe we could, we have to look at all aspects interconnected. That's one thing that when I wanted, looking at running, at first I looked at the school board, and then I looked, are the current congress, the council member wasn't running, I said, this is interconnected. All these problems are interconnected. And I called up, talked about platforms of other candidates. And we can't just focus on one, we need to look at everything. We need to see how the infrastructure, for instance, like the apprentice, apprenticeship program, it gives opportunities for people to learn new trades. We have a lot of new infrastructure being built. We looked at barriers that are, that people, so that people can be promoted and succeed, especially people of color and women. I believe that we need to look at affordable housing, modify ordinances in the land use manual to support this comprehensive plan. We need to look at it all together at an interconnected web. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Uglund.
First and foremost, we need to simplify the application for small businesses to get the assistance that they need. And we really need to work with the chamber. The chamber specializes in small businesses, and they are going to know how to work with these businesses, and they're going to know the businesses that really need the help. There is going to be a lot of vacant space downtown. Businesses are closing weekly. And we need to, as citizens, we need to support our local businesses. Whether you like these or not, don't punish our local businesses. Shop local. That's vitally important, because you know who owns those local businesses? Your neighbors, and your family, and your friends. So we need to be very mindful of that and take care of our locals.
Thank you. Candidate Rigby.
COVID has always thrown us for a loop, or has thrown us for a loop. And I think one of the most important things to look at is how to revive small business. And it's not just downtown. I hear a lot of talk about downtown, but there's businesses all over the city that are hurting, that have had to close. And things like property taxes need to be kept the same. What I was trying to think of in my last presentation was about the park and rec ballot measure. I think that should be placed on hold. We don't need to be doing things to increase spending right now. We need to make it easier for businesses. And we also need to keep in mind that the county has a big bucket of money that, from the CARES Act, that they'll be using for small businesses. So it's not all on the back of the city to solve this problem, but we do help, have help from the county also.
All right. And candidate Bailey.
I think psychologically, we still need to realize what time we are in. And I think we have improved nationally, we had a problem realizing that we are in a pandemic, a hundred-year pandemic. And I think psychologically, that helps us out. But I want to applaud what we're doing now. A couple of agencies, Channel One, handing out food, Families Children Services, they are doing a great job helping out. And in this crunch, in this time, we got to get back to local folks helping out local folks. It is what it is. We are in a pandemic. But with regard to business, I will go back to incentivizing businesses to come here. I will add on to what Todd said, we need to diversify our businesses. We need more than a Mayo town, if you will, and I applaud Mayo, but we need other businesses here. And then I think we need to reimagine DMC in this current time. What can DMC do to augment this situation? The state got a lot of money to make DMC what it's going to be. What can be redirected of those resources if they can be redirected? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm afraid that we've come to the end of the questions of our evening. We were going to, we're going to listen to the closing statements from each candidate. Now, candidates, you will each have two minutes to speak. And the order in which the closing statements are going to be offered is candidate Pesarsky, followed by candidate Rigby, and then candidate Dennis, candidate Uglund, and finally candidate Bailey. So, beginning with candidate Pesarsky.
So again, I want to thank the sponsors for hosting this event. This has allowed the residents to learn a little bit more about their candidates, their candidates. I want to thank those who are still out there listening, or who may watch at a future time. I know this isn't the most exciting stuff, but it is about our community. And again, my plan is to listen to the residents, because the residents are the experts. They know how to best manage their community. Now, what makes me different, or what differentiates me from some of my fellow residents? Well, I still believe the resident's voice is the most important. It's the most important voice. I understand what it means to be a public servant. I served. I'm willing to say enough is enough. We need to live within our existing budgets and not seek inventive ways to reach into the pockets of the residents, i.e. increasing taxes. The residents must come first. And residents should not have to suffer for the sake of an initiative or a project. Thank you. I look forward for your support and your vote.
Thank you. And candidate Rigby.
They told me if I put it on my wrist, I'd remember it. So we'll give that a try. I am of that age that periodically I do forget things, that, you know, you have that rush where things go through your mind, and then they drop out really quickly. But that doesn't mean that I don't have good ideas and wouldn't make a great representative for you on the city council of Rochester. So I do ask for your vote tonight. And I do want to leave by giving you something to think about and help us listen to on the city council. That's really what do you want from your city council. There's a lot of argument and discussion about whether the city council people should have raised their salary that they get paid, and whether the process was right. And I would agree that probably an outside agency would work best for raises in the future. But I think residents need to sit, think about, do you want your city council to be micromanagers like they are today of the administration? Or would you prefer to have a city that is run by the hired employees of the city, and the city council is just there to set policy and hire and fire the administrator? That would save the city council members a lot of time, and maybe there wouldn't be the need for the salary that they have come up with. A different alternative would be to have no city administrator and have a strong mayor who is elected and who could be the leader of the city. The mayor is already involved with the police department. She would have assistance from administrators below her, but there wouldn't be that one big person in charge other than the mayor, and they would be responsible to all of you. So I would think, would ask you to think about the type of government that you want. And if you choose to have the city council to be micromanagers, that takes a lot, a lot of time, and that's why they ask for a salary. But if you would like to change the way that the city of Rochester is run, please let us know, and we'll start discussions on that.
Thank you. Candidate Dennis.
Vague is safe, and transparency is trust. I invite you to go to my website, molly2020.com, to see some more of my experiences. I have a proven track record of building the doors of opportunity and making longer tables for inclusion. My strengths are that I am authentically curious. I want to listen, and I want to ask the hard questions, looking at myself and what we can do in our society to overcome barriers to succeed. I am honest. I believe, I have my truth earrings, a Wonder Woman hoop of truth. I believe that that is accountability. And I deeply care about people, which government is people. I invite, in these last few moments, though, I really want to just take a moment and ask a request, if you, everyone out who are listening, to go to their neighbors, if it's across the street, across the city, call and ask if they're okay. I really believe that we need to reach out, be a community, and it takes us starting. I wish I did this to my neighbor before he lost hope. During this difficult time, we need to have these courageous conversations. We need to, to ask our friends, can we help you to vote, so that we all can have, keep democracy alive and heal our community. Regardless of COVID, we only, all of us only have a few decades left to make this planet better than we found it. So with each cherished breath, I ask you to speak up. I ask you to be, do the chores of our humanities family. At the end of the day, I make the hard choices too, just like all of you. I pledge to empower your voice and speak truth to power. If elected, four years from now, I hope to stand here, again, maybe with a larger table, and say an opening line that despite the storm, we built the doors of opportunity together. Rochester is a community where everyone is safe, empowered, and can succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Uglund.
I'm going to end tonight with how I started it. There are three things to remember. I'm here to regain the trust of our city council. My focus is going to be communication and collaboration, and that includes collaboration with the county, Mayo Clinic, the school district, and DMC, along with our community citizens. And third, I'm asking for your vote on or before August 11th. There are some great candidates up here, and you, the voters, have some pretty tough decisions, but you need to be sure that your voice is heard, again, honor before August 11th. Our city needs to step back and focus on what our city is here for. And that is safety, public works, parks and trails, and economic development. With COVID, we really need to protect our small businesses and their employees. Another way that we can help with that is to stop the fee increases on these businesses. The liquor taxes went through the roof for these businesses, and that just hurts the restaurants and the bars. We need to listen, listen, listen to our constituents. We need to stop excessive spending. We need to end current and new stealth taxes that are going to be proposed. And we need to stop, sorry, I touched on that, stop increasing our business expenses. One thing I didn't touch on before when we talked about budgets, is the one place I don't want to see a budget cut, is the darn Alm Hills Bridge. The city needs to get that bridge started and finished. It's going to be four years before we can drive over a new bridge. So again, remember, three things. I'm here to regain your trust for our city council. It's all about communication and collaboration. And again, please vote for me honor before August 11th. You can get me on or before August 11. You can get more information about my campaign at voteyugland.com. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Bailey.
Thank you, everyone. Our attorney general, William Barr, said in lieu of the George Floyd murder recently, that extreme reactions have demonized police. He also said a significant increase in violence in the cities have been due to this issue. Now, this was a very powerful statement, and depending on what side you're on, I'm not really getting to whether you're for his statement or against his statement. But this statement really underscores a divide we have in our country and here locally. Black Lives Matter, or on the other side, All Lives Matter, or Blue Lives Matter. And this goes with a lot of different topics. I believe today's 2020 leader has to be able to galvanize the need for change while having on the other side folks that don't understand, understand change, or might be resistant to change. We need leaders that can realize that we live in a town where the average income or median income is 70,000, but on the other side, call for affordable housing and help for the homeless. And then again, going back to policing, we need a leader that can understand that we love our police, and we need to be supportive of all of our officers, but at the same time, calling for reform and the change that is needed. The 2020 politician, in my opinion, has to be a leader. I continue to say, leadership matters. Vote leadership. While we don't see the bigger issues overtly in our community as it relates to this divide, just read some of the Post Bulletin newspapers and comments on those things. That divide does exist here currently. We need leaders that not only understand change, but can bring on those folks that don't understand or are resistant to change. I am one of those leaders that understands both areas, and I ask for your vote. Again, leadership matters. Vote leadership. We need leaders more than politicians in this post-2020 era. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. I would like to thank each of the candidates for participating in tonight's forum. Thank you for your service to the community, and for your willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for government. I'd like to remind you all that the views expressed tonight in the forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters, Rochester, or any partner or sponsor of this forum. Thanks for our part. Thanks to our partners, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, the Rochester Post Bulletin, and the Rochester Public Library. Remember that Election Day is August 11, and that early voting has started. If you are, if you voted by absentee ballot and would like to change your ballot based on what you learned tonight, visit the website MNVOTES.org for more information on that process. Please remember to vote. If you have a question about your polling place, or you'd like to see your sample ballot, visit vote411.org. Vote, V-O-T-E, 411.org. You will find there more information about the candidates as well. To see this forum again, access the forums from the Rochester Public Library website. Good night, everybody, and thank you.